Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone back. Thank you for being here. This is a continuation of a regular meeting we're going into now. Continuation from the workshop, we've already addressed the presence of the quorum. We've already done pledge allegiance and invocation. So if we may please open this up at this time to item number three. Invitation to the audience for public comments. Board, staff, anyone at this time? Discuss anything, share anything? Happy birthday, anything? Okay. Okay, we'll close item three. Moving to item number four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24th, 2019. Everyone had a chance to read them, review them? Comments, questions, corrections?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed, none? Motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item number five, general managers' report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sherman, members of the board. I wanted to advise the board on an odor complaint at the Laguna Vista wastewater treatment plant that I investigated. I think it took a couple of days to do all that. But on the first day, when we had that north wind blowing real hard from the north wind, we went to the north side of the sewer treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant behind me and the wind's blowing right here and I could smell something coming from way beyond. So, in saying this, it's not necessarily that the sewer plant's always smelly. I believe that there's something else beyond that. On the other side of that pasture, it smelled like cow manure on one part, but then coming in to, from 510 to that Holly Beach Road, it smelled like something different. And as we drove to the sewer plant, it was a totally different smell. So I had three different smells and...
What do you mean by three different smells? Three different sources?
Three different sources, right. It looked like one of them was from that water they were dumping out there at the lagoon back there by Christiansen, between Christiansen's and the sewer plant. I think it has like algae smell. And then at the sewer plant, it smelled very minor. We had deodorant blocks in there and I could smell the deodorant block with a little bit of sulfur, which was not that strong. But beyond that, the one that I'm talking about is like cow manure like coming from the pasture back there.
They run cattle out there, don't they?
Yes, they do. The other thing that we encountered, the next day, Charles and I went all the way out there to, what's that road?
Schaefer.
Schaefer Road, right, from Buena Vista Road. We went back in there by the detention center. There's actually shrimp farms out there.
That's pretty far out.
And the guy said that they weren't working this time of year because they were running late, so they didn't do any shrimp farming this year. But when the ponds were empty, that he would get a smell. And it had rained that, previously it had rained. So that moisture that got in there, I think that kinda provided some of that smell going to the sewer plant and Laguna Vista citizens, so.
That's pretty far, that's a big distance.
Yeah, it is far and, I mean, we could smell it. So, the, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that not all the smells come in from the sewer plant. And we kinda contained it with the mat that's going into the intake. There's a mat with a deodorizer and then, plus deodorizers themselves. And every time we go out there, it kinda, it smells a little bit, but not that much. And I know that the people are, that are complaining about it or thinking it's a sewer plant only that smells everything, right? But it's not. But if y'all get complaints there, let me know again. We're gonna go out there again and investigate, you know? It depends on where you're at standing, where they're smelling it. But we'll do more investigation on it as, as we go along. We're not done with it, so.
Horns, the lake where we pump our affluent water from that plant? The Christiansen one? The one by?
It's right behind the wastewater plant, right there? In between?
Who owns it?
Oh, we do the, one, half of it, they own, Christiansen owns it, and then the other half is Laguna Madre Water District.
Okay. So if we pump water into it and it creates a smelly algae?
Yes.
That then blows onto the Christiansen's property, are we liable for that?
It, it, it just depends on how strong the smell is. We could be, but it's just a matter that it rained previously the whole month and it filled up, so.
The reason I ask is that they, they raised that issue to me.
Yes.
That it smells and that they think it's bacteria coming from that lake that we share with them.
It is affluent water, I mean, that does track that, I mean, that's...
Yeah, but it is, the affluent water they would throw out there is chlorinated and also it's, to a certain point, it's bacteria-free, you know? It doesn't grow any algae. It's pretty clean water.
Yeah, as far as the regulation, it's, it's the discharge that's regulated. Like our discharge ground basically comes off through those cat trails and then it would go down to that spillway to the north. So that, with that reservoir being so flat, I mean, you know, you got a flat area where half where it goes on Christiansen's property, part of it's the Laguna Vista development and then the Laguna Vista.
Why don't we, isn't there a valve or something that can be opened so the water flows out into the bay?
Well, the spilling, it's silted up and we've been cleaning up that area where, where we're in the process of...
So there is a, there is a valve, there is a spillway, but it's clogged?
Right. It's a matter of getting some culverts that are silted up.
If we open, if we clean it out, would all the water then flow out of the spillway and not develop the same bacteria?
That's what we're trying to do right now is just try to clean up the culverts and then, and then find out. Because it should flow out of there once we clean them out. I think they have like three feet of sludge in there, but the, the length of it that we need to crawl in there and clean it out is like 30 feet maybe, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's similar, that area used to be before where it used to be kind of like skate park?
Right.
When that was kind of an area where skateboards and nice clean concrete, I mean, that area used to drain a lot better than where the way it's silted up today. And so that, that either just plays a role in how much water gets soaked in that reservoir.
And normally that pond back there does not retain the water for too long. It drains down. It seeps down to groundwater.
Mm-hmm.
It just happened that it rained a lot that week, you know, so if it stops raining, it'll recede. Have you seen it dried up, Mark?
It's receding.
Right? It is now? So, yeah, so. So, I mean, if you get complaints, let, let me know and we'll go out there and find out exactly. And we can explain to the customers that are complaining, you know, what it is. If it's not our problem, we'll let them know. But we are working on that pond.
There is a lot of wildlife, so I mean, that has its own smells.
Yep, there is. The guy at, at the shrimp farm said that he had buildup of new guy poop, like real high, and that that was causing the smell. He said that, right?
Yeah, well, there's, there's ponds that were sold efficient wildlife, so those are abandoned ponds.
Yeah, also.
They do sit there and, they're going to say they're knowing it's on, so, you know, that could be a factor.
Yeah. But he, he did complain about the new guy poop piling up and that it smelled real bad too, so. He didn't let us go in. He was restricted from letting anybody in there, but he told us about it, you know, that they're not in working condition right now. Okay, that's it on, on the odor. Any questions, comments on that? The next one that I have is a low pressure complaint from the Sanchez Four. And that one, the same day that the gentleman called me from the maintenance department, he, we went out there and then checked some valves and tried to find out what the problem was and Hoya's crew found that one of the valves was not open.
Suntracer, Saider?
Sanchez Four.
Sanchez?
It says Sanchez Four. That's where we got the complaint. So, he said that, that he had 50 PSI prior to this happening, that like six to eight months ago it just went 38 PSI and it never went back to 50. So we, we went out there and Hoya's crew found that one of the valves from 24-inch line coming to the island was half-open, not fully open all the way. So they opened it and we, we seem to have tackled that problem because the pressures are up to 45 now. So I just wanted to...
Someone just didn't open it? I mean, just didn't open it? I mean, all the way or?
All the, yeah, they had probably a leak out there and they didn't open it. And that's what our engineer had mentioned earlier, that there might be valves out there that are shut, you know, halfway or halfway open or halfway shut. So that there's still out there some more possibilities of that happening.
Yeah, I'm like that. That valve from Island Village that we always mentioned during this event where they complained, now we've really opened it up, so tomorrow, Monday, weekend, we get another complaint again.
Yes.
I mean, we're gonna have, you know, pressure valves on top of, you know, this behavior to see how it's made.
Okay.
Doesn't a partially open valve just affect volume but not pressure necessarily?
Yep, it is.
But if you have that concept, high consumption, it would set up all volume in that, in turn that affects both.
Pressure goes down.
And the, how were the storage tanks on the island?
Not sure on that.
I think, no, he, oh, he just left. He was here.
He had a test, the final.
Okay, so what was the result on the, on the elevated storage tanks?
They were getting some, the one I believe that Andy Boyd was getting full, but they were creating a lot, a lot of pressure on the deck and stuff.
Okay.
They did have volume.
Well, they were, they were on the full side, so.
Yeah, yeah, from what I've heard, the behavior of the tanks of Hollywood was very different from the past behavior, I believe there's something's going on.
So we'll find out with this opening of that valve, we'll find out next, next high consumption or high demand period.
Have we collected any data from that to confirm, you know, that it had produced a 50 PSI or?
No. They got, they have a conflicting letter that they had sent out right away before we even got back to them. The, the letter was addressed to the chairman and the board members and I, I think I made a copy of it in there where the guy said that six to eight months ago, he told me on the phone that that happened, that the pressure was about 38 and never went up. And then they're saying here in the letter that they switched the pumps to about a year ago and that that's what happened, you know? So I don't know which, six months or a year?
The claim that it used to produce 50 PSI, do we have any data that?
No, because the pressures in the island are usually about 45 to 60.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't recall having 50 PSI on the island. 25, 27, whatever, we'll get out there.
When we opened it all the way, what did that produce? Was that close to that?
45, it's 45 now.
So today is at 45?
45, so. Yeah, it kinda helped out because it, it went up to 42 and then 45.
No.
So I, I brought it to the board's attention because it was addressed to you guys.
Okay.
So y'all can be aware of that, that we did provide assistance right away. It's just a matter that they sent the letter, I, I think I met with the guy on the 25th and the letter was sent on the 26th, the day after that and, you know, I, but anyhow, it's taken care of, you know, been taken care of. Hopefully that, once we get a high demand, we'll find out again what's, if anything else is not working properly up there on the island. And then the next one, y'all, if y'all have any questions on that, pressure, PSI, okay. The next one is my general manager's evaluation sheet. I provided for you guys, y'all can work on it during the, these two weeks, coming up two, the two weeks and then y'all, y'all will discuss it at the next board meeting in executive session and provide information back to us, you know? You don't, you can rate me on a zero to five score and y'all can do whatever y'all think is...
What about zeros?
Zero, yeah. Yeah, if you think I deserve a zero, do zero. But, yeah, it's up to y'all and y'all get together, executive session and decide like...
Really?
So, I don't think I've ever had a zero, but pretty close.
No, Carlos, never.
Anyhow, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Carlos, appreciate it. Moving along to item six. Consider and approve the bond election date of November 2019 or May 2020?
Make a motion that it's May 2020.
There's been a motion by Mr. Starkey for May of 2020.
A second.
There's been a second by Dr. Lalande, are all in favor?
Aye.
They are? Are there any opposed? None? Motion carries. We will be having a bond in May of 2020. Let's all work and make this happen.
Thank you.
Moving along to item number seven. Consider and approve the bond committee nominee selected for the upcoming bond election.
Why don't we just table that till next meeting and we can come back with our names?
Motion to table by Mr. Houston?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed, none? Item is tabled. Moving along to item number eight. Consider and review the findings from staff regarding the public information officer position for Laguna Madre Water District?
Yes.
We're gonna come up here because there's three of us that are going to do this presentation. I did talk to North Alamo, Steven Sanchez over there, and they do, they do not have a public information officer as a title to that job. They have a customer outreach coordinator, that's the name of that type. And they do have a full-time position for, for that job description. And it, it, what they do is, it's like a community outreach where they go out to, to the schools and talk to the students, because the students are the ones that bring home all the information, how, you know, provided to the parents. And you all do have this backup on item number eight on what to do.
Also, we'd like to mention that they have 180,000 population. That's the population that they serve. And they serve Eastern Indalvo, Milasit, Coman, and Lowry, Coman. They have a big population of students, 20,000.
Our job description was already available at the time that we discussed it, but not me. We already had a job description on it because we've been talking about it for a customer period maybe?
It was last year.
Last year? We have a note on there, but the job description is there on your packet too.
It's just a draft, it's open to changes.
The job description for San Antonio is communications strategist. We have a description, I have one too, of the job description. Now, the only thing question that we would have is that if we want a public information officer, it would possibly be a temporary or not a permanent position? And go ahead, Eddie, with your recommendations.
So, my, my recommendation is due to the, the bottom of work. I really don't feel that a full-time position is warranted for, for this. I would, my recommendation would be to go with a firm. We could, we could either solicit, have a request for proposals for professional services and hire a firm to, to do specific...
PR firm.
Yeah, PR firm.
Task oriented.
Task oriented, I think that would be a better route to go. I think we would save money as opposed to hiring full-time staff members.
Can you hire, I guess, the district, that's my understanding, cannot hire someone to promote the bond or do public information? I mean, that...
So, how can you bring in a...
Contracted company or someone to represent bond issue and, and those types of issues if it's not permitted, is my question. An in-house staff member can, can.
I would say that if you hire...
That is the goal of, of what a public information officer is for this.
We'd get the list and we, we have, you know, a lot of the members that are in the bond committee, get those, those members educated, who's that firm and I guess personnel too, because that way when they ask questions, that person will be available to answer all those bond questions. But the fact is, we cannot spend district funds for...
Promotion and advertisement of...
But see, I see a difference between promotion and information. A person certainly be on payroll and when asked a question can give an answer without overtly trying to sell a project. One thing I'd like to think about is that UTRGV has a communications department. I'd like to see an outreach to them, maybe establishing an internship or a part-time associate who's a senior or something like that, who might be interested in, in getting some, you know, groundwork done. I don't see a full-time job, but I certainly see a need for a part-time and, you know, with that type of resource, you know, so close, you know, why don't we tap into it?
But it's back to what I was, what I was saying though is, I don't think you can bring someone in for just bond advertising purposes and promotions.
Well, no, but they've got, they've got a whole...
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on, on the two, on the two items and agendas.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a need for it on the bond. Okay, so long as we're clear, right?
Because that, that is, that's a fact.
So that, that, our, you know, we kind of agree on the same thing, aren't we?
Because we also have to consider how much are we gonna be spending on benefits?
Good point. Yeah, so if it's not full-time, we don't have to incur benefits then, correct?
If the person works more than the...
But if we keep him under 30 hours, then there's no liability for benefits, correct?
Correct.
How many times in the past six months would somebody have needed to do these essential functions? Because my question would be, either we haven't done them in the past six months, which means we need to identify that we actually have a need for it, or we've been doing it in-house in the last six months. So has somebody else been doing these things for us in the last six months to a year?
I have been doing, Eddie has been doing in-house.
Okay.
It depends on what type of questions they have.
Mostly we share.
So like, has anybody written a press release in the past year?
Yes.
Yeah? Couple times?
Yes.
So why do we need to hire somebody else to do it if you already know how to do it?
Well, there, there will be nothing...
Would an intern? I mean, I like the idea of an intern, it's a good idea, right? Like, hey, we don't have to pay for them and maybe they can come on and give us some stuff, but I just...
We don't get press coverage.
No, we don't.
So the community doesn't have a clue of what we do.
So you're saying, let's get somebody that go, don't do it.
Website, social media, all of those updates and things that play in to modern updates, what's going on. Customer complaints can, can type in on social, it's all social media driven now.
So what we're saying is, we have not been proactive at getting information to the community and we would like to be more proactive at delivering information.
That is totally correct.
That's the, that's the need we're identifying? I just want to be sure that I, we're on the board.
Well, that's, yes, that's the discussion. Is it, you know, you can take the, you can take the line that no information is good information, or you can take the line that we're, we're not educating and keeping along with our customers that are rate and taxpayers and pay a sizable amount of money and not informing them of what we're doing. I.e. expanding lines or, or problems or water service interruptions.
Odor.
Odor elimination, lift stations, water pressure, there's a lot of things in there that...
The things that our, our staff is doing also is going to schools and educating our students also, trying to promote, you know, conservation measures and all that type of, where the kids can pass the messages to the parents, you know? And then educating on how the water treatment plant works, they go out there and do tours and water installation.
But, I mean, is that, you're back to the same thing. That's a lot of money to, to do that, but I mean, yes, the, don't be a drip, don't drop grease in the lines, you know, there's...
All of those educational promotion things are pretty, you know, pretty big in the...
In the big city, that's what they do.
Is there value added to it?
I mean, that's, that's a $75,000 question.
Yeah, but if you, if you find a student, I think you're talking now $20,000.
Part-time or?
Yeah, at the most.
Mr. Avalos?
And students are always looking for part-time work.
Want to hear comments on that?
What are we talking about?
Your comments or, I know this is, is one of your drives.
No, I think that, I think that the fact that we've never done it does not mean that we should not look into it.
Correct.
The board will create the value. The board will decide whether it's something worthwhile we should be doing. From my experience, it is something that, what I don't, what I'm trying to accomplish with this is that whenever there is, there's always gonna be activism on our product and there's always gonna be stories out there that we could control the narrative, especially when it's not true. And for a staff member to do that when they're trying to take care of the finances or anything else is, I don't think the way to go. We can start off with an intern, we can start off with a part-time position.
It's a good start to establish all of our needs.
Yeah, and then, and then they will determine, help us determine the need. But I think the need is there. I think that it only takes one bad story and it also is a way for us to start upgrading the community outreach. We, every now and then are gonna go ask people for money. And when we never, when they never see us, when they never see us out in the community, they never see us participating in anything, it's very hard to do that, you know? So it's a way also for us to develop relationships this way and just keep people informed about all the things that we're trying to do, the good things, because they never get to hear about the good things, just the bad things. And so it is a way for us to control the message, especially when the message is not in our favor and we know that there are, that there are facts that need to be said. So I think it's having a point person is better than, oh, you have time to do it this week, why don't you do it? Or somebody...
Yes.
You know, that, that's the whole point.
Or not getting your other task accomplished.
Yeah.
Or your dedicated task accomplished.
You have to take the person off their job to go do this, then they're not focused on the job. And, and, and that might cause us more headaches than, than if we did have nothing there, so. But I think that that person will determine the need for us, because they'll be coming back to us and, and you know what? This is something we should be involved with or this is something we can get a head out.
Let's reach out and start with, with an intern first and, and move forward from there, yes? Is that...
I, I like that idea, yeah. Yeah, the school could be a very...
Especially right now, summertime, you may have, be able to pick someone up that's off for the summer that may be wanting to do something.
And really, and really, I think what we're gonna find out is that the social media aspect of it is really what is gonna be more critical for that person and that's, you know, somebody that enjoys doing that kind of work. Okay, we'll look into the internship and then bring information back to you.
When you, when you do that, when we do it and, and we're looking in the social media, one of the advantages is sometimes we can see our views and things like that. I'd love to know, or as you craft this position and their job description, it'd be good to have actual metrics that measure like, do people actually look at the stuff that we talk about, you know? So if we hire somebody and they're putting information on social media and we're getting like a thousand views, that's awesome. It's certainly something we need. If we're getting like 22 views, hard to justify 22 people seeing, you know, spending money for 22 people to see. So that would be good enough.
That's right. So let's, let's, let's find a way to measure it and that way we can say, hey, this is a great idea, let's keep, let's, let's fund it more. Just a thought.
I think the intern's a great idea. I think we pursue that and I, I would like for one to be involved in the interview process, you know? If, if we could adopt a RFQ committee or, or something like that to, to see, you know, who, you know, who we catch with that nap when we cast it, if that's the direction we go. And I do also believe it should be a probationary period, you know? Maybe we give it the summer and see if we catch any traction, but...
It could develop into a permanent...
I think it should, you know? Very, very well has that kind of potential. I think it's a great idea, we run that down. I think our upfront cost isn't, isn't that high considering, you know, that avenue and I think, you know, give us an opportunity to see if there's multiple people that are interested in it.
I do agree with Phil Lund that we need to be able to measure what we're doing, because without that, we're not gonna know how effective we are. That needs to be taken seriously. Okay, if there's much of information you'd prefer to bring back to the board for me?
Thank you. Moving along to item number nine. Consider and discuss for possible approval of increasing board travel limit.
Yes. On the, we've been tracking the, the finances for board travel and we're, we're seeing that the next travel that we do, Mr. Sherman, you're gonna exceed the 3,000 that we had. So we need a board approval to move more...
So we need a board approval to move more funds in there from the existing, uh, funds that we have. So all we need is just board approval to.
We know how much more we're going to need or?
We, at least another thousand dollars from the existing.
Because if I don't anticipate that there's going to be any other conferences here.
Yes, uh, there's.
Or this, this one here.
There's going to be two more conferences, so what do you think Daisy? She gave me some numbers.
June and there's AWBD, there's mid-winter, but that's not until January.
Scott travels with a lot of suitcases, it's rough.
Needless to say, I don't charge meals or anything, it's drink like just air and hotel.
I'll save you.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Starkey, are all those in favor? They are, for the record, all abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving along, thank you.
Secure the expansion.
Thank you.
Moving along to item number ten, disagreeing engineers report, water plant two sludge lagoon progress.
So, Joe, where we've been taking that, that reservoir offline and cleaning it since February. I just provided a summary here in the memo, I mean, just to kind of, you know, just sort of talk about it from the beginning, just since it's been a while, we've had some new board members.
Are you happy with it?
With the, the, the waste going right now, yeah. I mean, we've, I've never seen it be able to be offline and get what rubber's done that, that far with operations. And, you know, we've got the land application approved February seventh, so, you know, by the way, we had a place to put all that dirt as we started cleaning it. And I mean, the only issue right now is there's a limit on what you can load and based on, you know, the way we've already hauled the number cubic yards, we've got lab work to convert it to dry metric tons and we're probably going to exceed our annual limit by about six or five by the time we finish cleaning it. So there'll be some corrective action that's required there, but at the end of the day, we could probably go six years without having to clean it again. So, I mean, that, I mean, we can work with our geotech, the coordinate TCEQ and develop our corrective action plan. But I mean, that shit may be, you know, resolved on our sludge lagoon, you know, we'll get that decant pump restored and kind of get it back to, you know, the way it recycling's intended to go. And so I guess that comes down to this proposed sludge lagoon, which would be nice, but it's also unfunded and seems like we can make work with what we've got and without doing that major project on the second lagoon. So that's, that's kind of the recommendation that makes down there.
Is not spending more money than's unfunded, I'm all with that, I think it's a great recommendation.
Yeah, that, that, same here for you, unless you want to.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Moving along to item number eleven, consider and remove from the table the following item tabled at the regular meeting on April twenty-four, twenty nineteen. Consider and discuss for possible approval task authorization with Freeston Nichols, Inc. for engineering services to complete Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant's sludge, holding tank and lift stations rehabilitation.
So moved or moved?
Motion made by Mr. Starkey?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Alon, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval task authorization with Freeston Nichols, Inc. for engineering services to complete Port Isabel wastewater treatment plant's sludge, holding tank and lift stations rehabilitation.
All right. I'll just let Charles speak over here. First off, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Ray wanted to be here, he has some travel complications, otherwise he'd be here today. Based on what we provided, as far as from a scope and P standpoint, a little bit, a little bit better. All perspective.
A little bit.
A little bit better? Based on the scope, obviously we were able to better define our scope. You know, we, we met Mr. Avalos out there and discussed different lift stations and things that we were looking at as far as, we got the replacement force mains or replacement lift stations, we were, we were looking at different things. What we did is we tried to approach everything as, as going rehabilitate lift stations, kind of really hone our scope on that aspect. On a project management standpoint, luckily that we have, we have multiple contracts with the district right now. So we looked for opportunities where we're going to have meetings that we're really going to be discussing all the projects that we have going on going on, not specific meetings, so we were able to reduce the amount of meetings that we'd be assigned. We're just going to spread that effort over multiple projects. We also worked with Charles on instruction-based services to where him and his team are going to provide a little bit more of the construction inspection and management side, which really helped us kind of bring our scope down. So, you know, based on that, just with Charles and what we're looking at achieving, we think that we're, we're right where we need to be.
Alex, what were your thoughts on the tour, I was not even making it?
We've got some serious issues on, on some of these locations.
The stations?
Yeah, yeah, there, some of them I anticipate, I did not visit a bunch of them, but I visited probably the worst ones and.
What are the worst ones, where?
Over here at North Shore, there's a really bad situation there.
Down there at the end of the street, at the curb down there?
Yeah, you got some old pipes coming into it, it's going to be, have to be relocated pretty much. I'm hoping that we can do it within the season. That's what I'm hoping we can do, talk to the city, maybe we can do that instead of having to acquire more land there. But there's a lot of, I, I see some issues there with the land, the way they're dumping all that cement there, I, you know, I don't want to get into.
And just clear, but that side number is lift station fourteen?
Okay.
And because of the environmental and aspects of acquiring land, it's not included on this contract at all. But I mean, we're, we're trying to figure out, I mean, there's the construction budget, so I could perhaps add some more size than what's on the current contract. So, I mean, that, that's the first one, we're going to try to resolve the environmental or how we're going to get that replaced before we move on there.
Yeah, no, that, that just happened to be, and I know we talked about that, but that happened to be one of the, probably one of the worst ones. The one over in, uh, in what I call just central Buena Vista there, Buena Vista proper, as I call it. The, uh, there's a lift station there that is, basically the, the tank is sliding up and it's already cracked, this and that, so this and that is. So that's going to, I'm, I'm thinking that might want to be, I believe, that's going to be an expensive one. But the other one we looked at is that one next to the tower and that, that was a lot of immersed and major work. The way it was set up, it is very difficult to maintain. Charles was showing you the, the design, how it flows, the stuff flows through there and I could see the, the design issue on that.
And test it, check it, the same thing with the other station.
So, so yeah, we've got some design issues that need to be fixed, so that makes it easier down the road to fix these. Not on the fly, but if you will, that we can use, for example, you have to build these redundancy, uh, uh, systems into it. And like, for example, that one at the, at the water tower there in Buena Vista, you can't do that. I don't think you can even use the other side without affecting the city, you have to shut down the thing. And unfortunately, to redesign it, you have to break down the building to redesign it. So, yeah, there's some, there's some critical issues. And some of the other ones, I'm sure are not as bad, but, uh, some of them might just require some cleaning or stopping or new pumps or whatever, but. And that one, the one over in Buena Vista in the residential area, um, that one, I noticed it has a pump issue where, I'm not sure, it went off while we were there. And the tape is just splashing everywhere, so there, there's a, that needs to be fixed now. And that, that's a problem right there.
So how much money are we going to be short now?
The fact that we've taken out the sludge holding thing, you can, and so that, that's a one, one half million dollar construction job that we scratched to put in the other state. So I mean, that's really our avenue to get these works completed.
You know, we really, in a sense, we.
Well, we're putting that off that needs to be done anyways, we're just putting it off.
Right, we're putting it off, we're not scratching that.
Well, I know, we're putting it off.
Yeah, and as far as, I mean, you know, from, from our gross projections, the two MTD plant is probably beyond twenty-four. So I mean, we have that time before the flows are going to force us, you know, require us to do that extension. So I mean, what we should have is a whole period done and then worry about that, you know, method is probably.
Thank you, Alex, thanks, Jordan. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I mean, that's an obligation, we need to, I, I would like for us to really, you know, you know, the, the, our, our staff to, to assess the whole, I mean, we need to do a complete assessment of our system, we need to understand that whole, everything. Because waiting for, for something to break is, is not really the best route to take. I feel like that's kind of what we're doing, I know we're trying to do the best we can to try to stay ahead of it, but.
You're back to.
Because of our limited borrowing capacity, I think it's a board to have a plan where, where you stretch it out past your borrowing capacity.
Well, then you're starting all over from the bond issue again, I mean, you're, if you're, I mean, you're starting back at square one again and what do we.
Not in, not in this particular bond, I'm saying just stick to what we have on the, on the table, but, you know, for, for the future. I mean, we, we have, I'm sure we have other, this, this issue that we have to.
Yeah, yeah, as, as far as the, the contract that's, that's on, that's proposed to the board right now, I mean, that's in a condition to where we meet the last item for the TWDB loan, we can, the budget will be revised to match the contract amount here and then we'll see if we're closing in a few. And then, and then skip up the preliminary engineering report and then add a better tie-down dollars, construction dollars on bill group and then we'll see how that man, the man will manage here.
And just, if I'm correct here for long, but these are, if I'm not mistaken, these are projects that were, were part of the last bonding.
Right.
Yeah.
That is correct.
It's not like we have.
No, that is correct.
Of, of, of saying, okay, well, let's work on this other thing, no. I think we need to tackle those failures, you know, as, as best we can, and start to get them out of there.
And use them as sales tools.
Uh, the, the other projects have been out to be addressed at some point and they're going to be tested and expressed.
I have a question, in the last meeting, it was mentioned, I believe, that there was two lift stations that were needing to be rebuilt. And, and in this, on SC three, I see under item number three, lift station improvements, there's twelve lift stations there listed and all of them are falling for rehabilitation. Talk to me about the ones that we were originally talking about rebuilding entirely and what's the plan there?
Right, we looked at the, I think we originally counted for lift station number one, which is the one that you looked at that was floating and cracked in the middle. And then lift station two, which was also right there underneath the tower, um, which is one of those things that we can, we can approach it as, as a replacement. Technically it's running, we can make improvements and it'll continue growing. There are some challenges with lift station one because of the loading, it appears that the, the loading has, has stopped. And we're talking with the operators, you're saying that more, that happened more in construction, maybe they weren't de-watering it correctly and maybe it wasn't so much as, looking at as a continuing problem, but the problem that was there and they just kind of, contractor just left.
Yeah, with the, with the original installation, I mean, they missed the, the specify, they have to buy about a plus. But it was, they didn't, they didn't finish the whole drive and it was designed well. And then it's always had problems with the hammer, you know, busting pipes and planks and, you know, it's just been a problem spot that they want.
So one and two lift stations were originally projected to be replaced and now they're going to be rehabilitated?
Well, well, the second lift station is the one in Buena Vista by the water tower. And really what drives the, the replacement rather than rehabilitation is the growth of Buena Heights of going towards Buena Vista. So, so we know Buena Heights is going to potentially have this eight-by-maker development and so it's a matter of, you know, we need to make that decision. So we can either upgrade the system or we can upgrade the system in one direction and really.
But that property's on annex, they have to buy into that, right? So we'll have some money available for that when they buy in.
Right, right.
And they'll have to make some improvements per the development acceptance too, so they'll have to put some in also.
Right, right.
So it's not entirely the, the water district's responsibility.
And that's on the number one, I mean, there is the potential, I know I, I mentioned, you know, just putting some ID, some of the, of the cement to kind of stabilize it, to hold it, to keep it from coming out more. And that might be a temporary solution to not get into a much, just to kind of stabilize. We're not going to necessarily fix anything, but I think there's, we still need to fix that part in that, in that.
Yeah, now, like, like Charles mentioned on lift station number two, when we increase capacity, the wet well, pretty much the, the cup in the ground has to get bigger. We have more flow coming in, it's all based on working volume and not overdoing pumps. So if we, we account for that additional flow, like what's been indicated, that there's a long program, what, what that flow is increasing, we may have to increase the size of that wet well, which the only way is to, to replace it. If we don't have to, then, you know, as we discussed, there's some piping changes that we can make that can improve as far as operations, make it easier to operate the valves and operate redundantly, so there's, there's rehabilitation improvements and then we have to take that next step. So that's kind of part of the, the flow monitoring, is that we are going to evaluate the original recommendations of the flow coming into the, into each lift station and evaluate whether or not those are accurate or if we need to change any of those up. And at that time, we can work with the district on where we've been really, where the, where the original number's really conservative on development or you can modify those assumptions. So that's something that we can work out during the design, but again, it's something that we don't know now.
Yeah, in general, the rehab approach to that lift station two, there's a water tower in Buena Vista, that's to really just give the system rehab for Buena Heights to be going at the force point.
I hope this doesn't sound like an expensive work order, change, change work order. Okay, just commenting.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
You talked about, I forgot which lift station, but you're fearful that the capacity of the well is not sufficient enough. Can't you offset by the frequency of the pumps in your discharge?
Um, you can, there are things that we can do by adding additional pumps or even installing variable frequency dials, which you don't usually do with cormen rubs. You can do a little bit easier with, with submersible pumps. Yes, there are things that we can do and we'll evaluate those when, when we see, because, again, it depends on horsepower and how many shirts per hour that, that's recommended for those sized pumps.
But you have to offset that as far as what would the cost of a new plant be just to enlarge the, the holding capacity?
Right, yeah, at some point, you know, okay, we're replacing pumps, we're replacing piping, why don't we just put that two hundred thousand dollars into a brand-new asset that's kind of.
You know, I don't have any issue, I don't have really any issues with any of the numbers except the design part of it, which happens to be the biggest part of it.
Right.
So, for example, I'm looking at page number two of your attachment, lift station number one.
With Paige Regan, her.
The attachments in his proposal, it has a, at the back, at the very back of his proposal, keep on going. Yeah, right there. Okay, so you detail the different lift stations and what you're going to do to them, okay? Now, what I want to know is how you justify the design expense of, let's just pick a couple of these, okay? Now, I will be the first to admit that I've never designed anything sewage-related, but I can read construction plans, I know a little bit about that. So we're looking at lift station number one, you detailed eight points, the first one being the site, providing TCEQ-approved fencing. Does that require any design on your part?
Nope, only detail sheet, so you have a little bit of.
All right, what about the wet well, where you say you're going to repair the exposed top of the wet well, does that require engineering design on your part?
Uh, it's a specification for the concrete repair.
It's a spec sheet, it's, it's, right.
It does, it does take time, but yes, that's not a major effort, nothing.
All right, it's not a major effort, that's what I wanted to hear. Then you talk about pumps and motors, those two bullet points require design efforts? Okay, in what way?
Okay, so you have two existing pumps right now, we need to add a third based on flow. So when we add that third pump, what we have to do is make sure, number one, we don't know what was originally designed around, so pretty much we're, we're backward engineering the entire position. Do we have the.
You're determining, you're basically, you're determining what you got versus what you need.
What we need, so we're, we're pretty much reevaluating, is the wet well large enough?
Right.
Do we have enough water in there? Okay, the original pumps are they operating in the right spot? If we just add in the exact same pump and go to the triplex instead of duplex, are we going to get the flow we need? If we don't, then we're replacing all the pumps to try to get the flow that, that the pump station needs. You know, if those, if those pumps are no longer available, then we have to work, contact multiple manufacturers to re-coordinate that effort of climbing a super bowl pump. So there's some challenges in that. The same thing with the force mains, we talked about some of the force mains, that we're going to get those cleaned. So we're starting with, with, so we can develop those C factors, the friction factors, just to develop those curves. So pretty much we're going to take those lift stations and working with, with staff, redevelop those flows, those heads, make sure the pumps are operating in the right spots. But we, again, we don't know what the original engineer did, we have a lift station that floated, you know, whether or not it's construction or if it's engineering, pretty much we need to, we want to make sure that it's, it's working right.
I understand your construction supervision part of it, I'm just questioning the amount of engineering. I understand your construction supervision part of it, I'm just questioning the amount of engineering and design work. Okay, is, when you talked about the discharge piping and valves?
Okay.
What, what's required there?
Um, pretty much that's going to be CAD detailing, uh, we'll be adding, uh, air release valves. Uh, Charles mentioned that you got water hammer, where, you all, uh, you all having broken pipes and things like that, high pressure, transient pressures. So, to me, when I, when I walk up on a lift station and I see no air release valves on it, that makes me wonder, okay, what else did this engineer, you know, what else we get?
But what part of design is that?
Um, it's just sizing, again, again, it's CAD detailing, specific to this lift station.
Okay. And then you talk about the electrical upgrades and the SCADA upgrades.
Right. So we'll be replacing a lot of the, the worn out electrical, um, one thing, let's see if it's in here. And I, I don't have the full list of electrical upgrades, or we're, we're working square here on that, so I'm not an electrical engineer, so.
Either way. Then you talk about the concrete slab crack repair.
Pretty much what it is, it's, uh, we'll, we'll be calculating, uh, the boon seed of the lift station, uh, like, uh, Mr. Alves mentioned, is there a way to, to weight that lift station down? It's more or less like pushing a cut down and underwater, you pull your hand off, it pops out of the ground, or pumps out of water, pretty much evaluating, do we have a problem, is it something that we can fix? Where are we going to go with that, and then make a recommendation from an engineering standpoint.
Then you talk about the emergency power and the diesel pump.
Okay, so for the, the diesel pump, again, that's coordinating with multiple manufacturers, uh, to, to size that pump, uh, designing the foundations for that pump, designing all the piping where it works. From sucking out of the wet well, which ran to core, we did design the original slab, so we're going to, uh, in here, whether or not we can just pour the top of the slab to put our suction piping through, or whether or not we need to reinforce that slab at all. It's already got cracks, we already have issues with that slab, to create another hole in it, could be a challenge. So, designing the piping to the, to the, again, developing a site plan, showing our suction piping to our pump, sizing the pump, working with manufacturers for pricing and, and, uh, pump curves. Getting the piping redesigned, redesigning the piping, so pumping back into the force main, and then also developing all the controls and electrical that has to do with having a backup pump that starts up when all the pumps fail, and electrical outage. So, it's pretty much designing another lift station off to the side, and reevaluating those pumps separately from your, your pumps that you already installed.
Then field services, that's not necessary. I guess I'm just uncomfortable with the amount of design services. Typically, when I address a problem in construction, I'll pull a sub here, a sub there, and say, okay, this is what we got to fix, how are you going to do it, and give me a price? No drawings, I mean, it's, you just do it.
Right.
So, the cost incurred in getting this done, you know, it just, it concerns me.
Right.
But I know it's standard, industry wise, you know, what you do.
Right.
I, I have one comment, that, uh, lift station number one, the previous contractor that did the job there had a hard time with keeping that wet well down because it kept popping, popping up. You know, a lot of groundwater coming up, it was, they had a real hard time pushing it down.
Right.
That's what I remember on that one. And, uh, I think both of the lift stations are in Laguna Vista.
Those are my concerns.
What should he do, do it for half? Is it fair?
I, I can't.
Maybe we should get your subs.
I can't answer that, like I said, I've never done that type of work, it's because.
You know, it's going to be, you know, we, we did a rough estimate, um, it's a 3.5 million dollar project. We, we are approaching it, uh, in a little bit different way, we're going to use a lot of photographs to try to cut down on, on CAD effort, on the CAD, that we specifically want to show very clearly. Just remember, the, the more vague we have things out there, the more changewalks we're going to have, the more construction delay claims we possibly have. So, what we're doing is kind of walking that fine line of making sure we have enough detail to avoid issues with contractors, so.
And you know, really, a lift station is really a simple animal. You have a deep pit that the shit goes into, you let it accumulate to a point, and then you pump it out to a higher elevation. You might aerate it, you might have multiple pumps, but it's, it's not a complicated animal in and of itself.
What action are we taking on this?
Well, we're multiplying that by thirteen.
Well, I know, but you divide, you divide what you have by thirteen, it's still a lot of money.
Right, and then one thing to, to think about, and I, and we did count for, you, uh, Mr. Houston, you, you mentioned, uh, a percentage, fifteen to eighteen percent of construction. And, uh, we took that apart, we were listening, and again, we don't actually use percentages, we.
And I just told you what my experience had been.
Exactly, exactly, so we, we use that, we just, we just got it into account, um, and so when we evaluated it, again, I mentioned this before, we, we account for everything that has to be done. We have to send something to our, our board, we know it takes an hour for the CAD tech to print it and bind it, we know the admin's going to take thirty minutes to mail it. That all goes into that level of detail, when you figure out, but we did literature percentages, and so, um, when we, when we broke it out, we have, we have tasks in here that are not related to construction. So, the flow monitoring, wastewater monitor calibration, that's, that's not really part of the.
And I don't have a problem with any of that.
We have engineering project management, which is just part of it, putting it all together, and we have the design, the construction. Based on where we think we're going to end up at that 3.5 million, and again, do not hold me to that, that's, I spent a couple hours and evaluated one of the station, and kind of figured it all through all of once. I didn't evaluate, I didn't coordinate with any manufacturer or anything, pump, so. So, if we take out those engineering costs, we're, we're right at eighteen percent, so, well, you're still on the high side, understandably. But again, on this project, because it's a water development board project, we're going to have to create the engineering feasibility report, which is pretty expansive, we have to evaluation of alternatives. Um, so there is more recording work in, in, uh, than design work, but again, this thing, plus, just working with the water development board can be a real challenge. I'm working with them on two different projects right now, it feels like they, they send us one comment at a time, and we resubmit it, and then they send us one more comment, and we resubmit it, and they send us one more comment. So, uh, it, it, there is more effort for us to work with the water development. And including during construction, because with the American Iron Steel Act, and working with, checking their D B E qualifications and keeping up with that, it, it's a lot of resubmittals and things like that, it's contractor requirement, always used to work in those criteria.
And, uh, in saying that, is that where the part where Texas Water Development Board is going to ask about the cost, engineering cost? Like, make sure that, that, uh, it's not overboard, or?
Right.
You know, that they do ask about those cost estimates that you have?
Right.
And they are concerned about it too, so.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could very well approve this, and, uh, if the water development board says no, we, we, we can't pay that.
I did talk to Mark Evans, uh, he, he worked for us now, he did work for the water development board for many years. Uh, he was not aware of a, a rule of thumb percentage, or he'd not heard of anybody not being approved for engineering percentage, but he said that doesn't mean that, um, doesn't exist somewhere, but he, he wasn't aware of any written criteria.
You should have said seven to eight percent heard.
We, we cut services, like, like I mentioned, we, we cut services.
That's right.
To, to get to that eighteen percent, we're working with Charles on the.
See, when you said that, working with Charles, that, that really does.
The fee should go up.
It probably should, but I don't want to pay for it.
No, I, I think we're right where we are, I think, I think it's going to be a challenge for us to, to, um, from a project manager standpoint, and what could happen with the E F R and water development board, you know, there's, there's a lot there. So we're going, I know that we're going to have to be appreciative.
And I hope you know that if this doesn't work out well, that you probably don't stand a hell of a chance doing the, the big project that we'll vote on next May.
You, you always have to, to earn the next one, so we, we understand that.
And I mean, as far as the available budget to get this stuff in the ground, I mean, we're talking about a construction dollars of 3.5 million, in our construction budget, that'll be resolved, revised with our contract in place.
Got to wiggle room for a change order, or I think we've made him sweat long enough, haven't we? Calls for an action, you hear none?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Stark, he's talking to Mr. Alves, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. I was trying to sweat. Item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible approval or disapproval of Garber work authorizing regarding water plant two proposed sledge lagoon?
Yeah, I mean.
I, I, I was going to, I have, I still have questions on that, and I think, uh, there's more questions involved in that, uh, approval, so I'm, I'm going to recommend that we.
Take no action?
No action.
I mean, well, Richard, you'd like to hear him out, or, or recommend no action?
Uh. Yeah, since you're here, you want to.
I can, certainly.
Yeah.
It's a nice way to start an agenda item, no action.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Richard Correa of Garber, and what you have in front of you is a revised contractual vehicle to get this project back on track. Uh, some of you are aware, some may not be aware, that this project changes scope, uh, along the course, and what we're simply asking for is a revised contractual vehicle to get it back on track, you know, for both of you, both of you concerned.
So what do, what do you need, what do we need from Richard to get this back on track? I guess that's why we're, we're tabling this, but I'm not clear.
Well, I mean, the.
So what are we requesting?
I mean, our primary issue is by answers, I mean, you know, we, we're, we're strapped on by, you know, we're putting a big commitment on our shore side, so I mean, at this time, it's just a funding limitation for who's to determine any, any of the action.
Yeah, for, from, just, part of the reason I, I got to, just need to take no action on this, and just do a little bit more background work on it, is we, uh, for, for me, I mean, we've been, I know when Doyle was here, we started working on this issue with the first, you know, over there cleaning it out and. And I was under the impression we're, we're still moving forward with building a new one, uh, up until Thursday of this past week. That's concerning to me, I think there's a process issue, and that's why I'm not to, not taking any action to knock it.
And the same with me, I, uh, I think we're, we are going to need sometime or another that information, and, uh, move forward with it, maybe not today or tomorrow, but sooner or later we will. So, that's my concern.
But I, I do have more than one concern, but that's.
No, just, just wanted, well, everyone, you know, full disclosure. Okay. Uh, no action, we're going to move along, item fourteen then? Thank you, Richard. Uh, Director of Operations report?
So what's going to happen with it?
Uh, there was no action on it, we're going to discuss a couple of things, bring it back, it'll show back up.
We'll hear about it again.
Yes, it'll show back up.
Whenever we're ready.
Gone, not forgotten.
Okay.
Take another couple of meetings.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have submitted the, uh, April's report, which is comparing to the April of last year. Uh, this report is on service calls and calls, uh, it pretty much, uh, it, uh, lines out the, uh, that's the back of the report, and where they're classified. They're pretty much, uh, the same, they're pretty close as to what happened last year, uh, as happened in this year, uh, with the exception of, uh, meter tests. Whereas we're not doing any really meter test at this point, uh, as I mentioned sometime back, our meter group is pretty much the hive, and they're helping with the installation of the meters. And then we have the, uh, collections, uh, which is pretty much the same thing, except for, uh, we're showing a little bit more for the maintenance. This general, uh, this back condo we have, that is able to help us with the maintenance quite a bit, so, uh, the reports are pretty much aligned, if we have something else, uh, if you have a question. The other report is on the meters, and I'm submitting it at this point because I wanted to give you the most, uh, current information, uh, which I received, and this is being done on a daily basis.
Are we there yet?
I'm sorry?
Are we there yet?
Not yet.
I'll be the kid in the back of the car.
Sixty-eight percent completed.
We're, we're at.
I think mine was the first one changed, just for the record.
We're at about a total of, uh, almost fifty-nine percent, uh, overall, as you can see, the meters being installed per cycle, uh, for cycle one, uh, these are the highs of twenty-five, uh, fifty-two. Uh, we have installed nineteen ninety-seven at this point, which contains, uh, meters to be installed of five hundred and fifty-five. Quarter spell is sixteen hundred and fifty-nine, uh, we have installed four hundred and ninety-four at this time, uh, we have seven hundred and seventy-five to be installed, and in cycle three, which is not hybrid, we have a total of twenty-five fifty-eight that needs to be installed. And we have installed twenty-one sixteen, and we have just right under four hundred that need to be installed. Uh, these are meters that were on the original contract with Ferguson, uh, which the number of meters at this point has, uh, somewhat increased because of the, uh, because of the need, the new housing and stuff that's been, uh, built. But, uh, as far as the contractor concerned, we're, we're getting along with it. So, we're looking at, uh, as far as S P I, uh, P M I, the, uh, third, uh, independent contractor with the position. Uh, they didn't like the fact that we weren't able to keep up with them, that I had, uh, we had one team of two members that were helping us. Uh, they were supposed to be cleaning out, uh, locating the meters and, and cleaning them out, so P M I could just go out there and, and switch it up, and, uh, that's all they, they wanted to do. Anything else other than that, they would have been charged, it's at a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, and, uh, of course, you were paying for all of that. So, I don't know, do you have any questions on, on the beer installation project?
You anticipate being done in, when, September?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah?
We take over the P M I, we're, we're hoping to finish by the end of September.
Doing a great job.
Uh, my next report, uh, is dealing with the departmental project cost savings, and a lot of this, uh, information, I had submitted it, uh, previously. Uh, I decided to bring it back, uh, because there's been a lot of concern with cost, uh, as far as, uh, the rights we saw, we do come to the board quite often for approval of, uh, certain expense. But I also wanted to show the board that we are making very conscious effort to cut costs wherever we can. Uh, we do look at, uh, whether we could in-house, or if we could outsource it, uh, if we can handle it, as far as Manhauer is concerned. Uh, dealing along with the normal work that we have, we will do it, and I know that we can cut costs that way, and so the staff is very well aware of that, and they're all, uh, willing to do as much as they can. Of course, sometimes they just get overloaded, so we have to outsource it. There's a state page memo that I wrote up there, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions on it, but, but it, it tells the, uh, the number of ways that we've, uh, caught cost, uh, to save the district money. Uh, there is also, uh, there are pictures on there, as far as like on the, the roof of the water pipe number two, of the amount of floods that we have removed. And, uh, that, this is the flood that, uh, Charles gave on the engineering report, that is a picture of the, the glue, as, as it was last week. Uh, we have made quite a bit of depth on that. Uh, we have made quite a bit of depth on that, Scott. Cleaned it up quite a bit, and it's coming along really good. We're hoping that we can finish that up in the next, uh, couple of months, uh, provided it doesn't rain. And then, uh, as Charles said, we'll deal with the sludge and, and try to mitigate the, the circumstances as much as possible.
You know, I really like this report.
Yes.
And it's something like this that really brings to light the need for a public information officer. I'd like to see this thing made into a concise article or document, and the headline to be Laguna Madre Water District Details In-House Cost Savings. And that goes to the press, that goes to Facebook, that goes to our webpage, but letting the people of this district know what you're doing and how you're working to save them money. And just by these few people in this room, if it doesn't go out any further than that, it's, you wasted your time putting the report together. If you wanna get the benefit of the report, you gotta let the public know what you're doing and how good you're doing it.
Okay.
Well, so, I've been looking into doing that.
And, and yes, to add what you're saying, I looked at some other utility sites and whatnot, and they have project updates, and on, they, they list what their, what their horizon projects are. Cause I looked at other, other districts in Houston and stuff, you know, friends that I know of, of other, I mean, MUDs in Houston and stuff that I've met along the way, that had looked at what their, you know, cards, and I've looked at their stuff, and they have, you know, progress and, and, and things they're, they're working on, whether it be waterlines or whatever it is. They, they are informing people, uh, I mean, and there are people that, that read that and watch that and look at that and, and...
That was a real good article recently in the press about the odor control. You do something that same size on this, let the public know.
I mean, we, we mail statements to everybody in the district.
Yeah, but I don't read them.
Every month? No, I don't, you don't have to read the statement, but it's real easy to include something with every statement.
Any way you can get it out.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I think this is great. I know, you know, I raised some concerns about costs and where can we save money, so appreciate you putting something like this together that shows what you're already doing to do it. And I, it's not hard to, to include something with the monthly, you could have a monthly, if we got an intern or a, a public information officer.
It's a fact sheet, a fact sheet.
Fact, just an update every month in, in people's bills, so they knew like, hey, here's what we're doing, here's the good news.
Right.
You know, let people know that, hey, this is where your money's being spent. That's what I would do first.
Fact sheets.
Yeah, every month.
Uh, any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Anything else, board? Meeting is adjourned at six forty-five. Oh, excuse me, oh, excuse me. We have item fifteen. Moving along to fifteen. Consider and discuss for possible ratification of payment to Southern Trenchless for fifteen thousand four hundred and fifteen on the rehabilitation of an eighteen-foot manhole at Constellation and Golf.
Yes, sir. And this particular manhole, as, as we, as we discussed the last time, the last meeting, this was a, uh, deep manhole, and, uh, and of course, with the board's consent, that we go out and, and, uh, outsource it. We did talk to, uh, we did get TNT's go out there and look at the manhole. They gave us a verbal, uh, bid of twenty-two thousand. We called Southern Trenchless, uh, who had rehabilitated one of our manholes, uh, about a, a little over a year ago. They came out and looked at it, and in the course of the conversation, uh, they told us that they were in the buy board, and that something like that, uh, on the buy board would cost us thirteen thousand dollars. We got with the procurement officer, uh, with a brike, and he looked into it, and sure enough, it was there, so we decided to go with the buy board without having to advertise it, uh, which was still, uh, six thousand dollars plus cheaper than what, uh, TNT had quoted us. And they repaired that, uh, last week. We're here asking the board to verify that, uh, the payment form.
So moved? Motion made for approval by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallan. Are all in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of estimate to repair VAC Con truck?
Uh, yes, sir. This VAC Con truck, uh, unit thirty-three, uh, we passed this VAC Con out for about eleven years. We have made a lot of repairs to it. As a matter of fact, uh, as Mr. Alves was inquiring into it, uh, we had, and looked at it, and we came up with a total amount of, of having done repairs for the level, for the past eleven years, of a hundred and six thousand dollars. I realize that's a lot of money, that it's spread over eleven years, but we do need a backup, uh, as we, we're to go and out and get a, a second, uh, hand truck, it would probably run us, uh, probably half of what the, the loans just bought, uh, would cost us, uh, do we, I think I got to mention it?
I, you know, it comes back.
It didn't come back?
No. You know, they, they were renting like for a week or something. But, you know, this can be another fact.
We are, we are looking at to, uh, secondhand, uh, VAC Con truck.
To buy a second-hand one?
Yeah, rather than the...
A new unit?
I mean, we're putting money into this, but...
Right.
We know what we've got, uh, that we're getting to. We buy a second-hand one, we don't know what we're getting.
Yeah, I don't wanna go that road.
No, the reason I wanted to look into how much we spent, uh, on this vehicle since we've had it, was to determine whether it'd be cheaper to rent one as a backup, especially during big times. But for ten thousand dollars a year, which is what it's averaging, I think it's best we just go ahead and fix this one.
Yeah, the rental of the VAC Con, as, as we've done it in the past, uh, was when we have both, VAC Con stopped down, uh, it would cost you the six thousand dollars, you know?
And I think we looked at when, when we ordered this other one, we looked at getting a used one, and we're looking at minimum.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of used. Used is typically used for a reason.
Yeah, got it. So, uh, at thirteen thousand, we figured that, uh, that should last us a while. And we do use this VAC Con, the, this model job, especially here in the main lot, that new VAC Con, uh, should be coming in within the next couple of weeks.
At the end, I'll please you.
At the end of this one. And, uh, that will be primarily used at the island, because that's where the, the deeper manholes are, and that's, uh, the most problems because of the, uh, of the prevent maintenance that collection does, you know, the, the grease and so on, that will cap out the, on the, uh...
How long have we had just one VAC, VAC Con for? Right, we have one right now?
Well, we actually have two, but the other one hasn't, uh, been working, that's why we bought the new one.
That's why we got the new one. Do we have any working right now? One working right now?
A loner.
Oh, just a loner?
A loner.
Just a loner? And it works like a loner?
It works pretty good.
Real good, I guess.
Works like a brand-new one.
And it's a pre-loan.
Can we delay till we get the new one any longer?
Well, it's, it's the same company, they're letting us have that one, yeah.
Use it like a rental.
Yeah.
So, that's why we haven't really rushed them, it's trying to bring in the new one. So, we're, we're asking for approval of getting this...
A move, we approve?
I second.
Motion made by approval, Mr. Houston, seconded by Mrs. Starkey. All those in favor?
Wow.
Who are? Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. Glad we're moving along. Item seventeen, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial report for March twenty nineteen. Any comments, questions, anyone in particular? Pull one out, discuss anyone in particular? Otherwise, acknowledge them. Uh, motion to acknowledge by Mr. Alves, uh, seconded by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor? They are. Uh, any opposed? None. Thank you. They are acknowledged. Item eighteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of the investment report for the quarter ending March thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Do we want to go through this? Do we want our finance to go through this? Questions or comments about our financial report? Move, we approve. Uh, motion for, it's a motion to, uh, just a...
Accept.
Yes, motion to accept. Made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in acceptance?
Yep.
They are. Any opposed? None. We have accepted them. Uh, moving along to number nineteen, consider and review the expenditures from April sixteenth through thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Any questions or comments about any particular expenditures, or do we acknowledge all of the expenditures? Acknowledge expenditures made by Mr. Starkey.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Houston also acknowledged them. Any questions or comments or disapproval of acknowledgement? None. We have acknowledged them and accept them. Item number twenty, we are officially adjourned at six fifty PM. Thank you.